And I'd like to ask Pastor Jim Abshur to say the invocation. Jim, as you know, Jeff Justice's dad, Jones, is pretty sick. And also ask you to remember the family of Chris Tackett from Dorton that passed away. That's Philip and Laura's son. And just, he's about my age, passed away this week. And it's a good family, and I'm very sad to hear that. So if you would do that.
The May family, Tommy May.
Oh, and I also forgot Tommy's, Judge May's mother. Just, that shocked me, such a sweet lady.
Yeah.
And I remember that family as well.
Let's pray. Merciful and gracious and kind loving Heavenly Father, Father God, we're proctant and gracious morning, thanking you Heavenly Father for another beautiful day, for the blessings of life. Lord, just praising you and giving you all glory and honor for all things, knowing, Lord, that you are the great physician and you know those that are sick. Brother Johnny is very sick. I pray your blessings upon them. Bless the ones that have passed this life, Lord. I pray for their families, that you will comfort them in a way that you know how. Father God, I pray this morning you'll forgive us of our shortcomings, be with us this day. Help us, Lord, as we conduct this meeting and do the work for the people of Pike County. And I just pray your blessings upon each and every one and sure today. Father God, go with us through this meeting and on down through life. Lord, we love you and we pray you. In Jesus' name I pray, and amen.
Amen.
Next item is, is there a motion to authorize an appointment, Penny Burke, as acting fiscal court clerk, in the absence of Lisa Little?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Present.
Commissioner Abshur.
Right.
We have a quorum. We are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Chad Hawksen if he would lead us in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its beloved and which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. The next item is approval of appointment to the Pike County Cooperative, I'm sorry. I'm going to pass over that. I'm not ready to make that appointment yet. Paul, could you get me a copy of the statute on the process for appointment of people to the Cooperative Extension District Boards? I appreciate it. Thank you. The next item is adoption of resolution for filing of a flood control match program grant in the amount of $99,212.98 to be used as matching funds for the Levisport Basin coal run flood risk management project, and approval to execute all documents related to such grant. Jimmy, is this money that's already sitting in the account, or is this money we're asking for?
It's money we're asking for.
Okay. It's not coming out of coal severance?
No. No, no, no. It's coming from the LG to meet our budget.
All right. I'll make a motion on this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is adoption of resolution authorizing the filing of a grant resources accelerating needed transformation program of 2024 project application for up to $191,314 in grant program funds with the Cabinet for Economic Development authorizing directing the Pike County Judge Executive to execute any documents which are deemed necessary to carry out the project, and authorizing authorized representative to act as the authorized correspondent for the project. These will be, funds will be used for matching funds for the hillbilly trails, A R C grant. Sharon's working on this application. Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is authorization to submit a letter of intent for an application to the Kentucky Association for Economic Development Site Selection Group for the Wolf Pit Industrial Technology Park, and approval for checking the amount of $1,000 made payable to the K A E D Foundation for the application fee. Sharon, could you come up here and just explain this real quick? Greg, while she's coming up, do you have any bids?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. The K P D, Kentucky Product Initiative Development Program with the Cabinet for Economic Development, they make available based on your population to each county, like Pike County's, can you all hear me? Is this not on? $2 million divided by Pike County, going back to 1.7 billion to do a pad for the industrial park and site development and also to finish. Wrong button. To finish the broadband and the natural gas. It's to finish the infrastructure there, plus provide a build-ready pad. Right now, we are, what can I say? We're built, we're not build-ready yet until we put that pad or put a building there. So I've decided to do the pad.
Say that one more time now.
A shovel-ready industrial park means that you could, you know, the land is there, but you've got to dig, do your own found, do your own site pad, do all that. A build-ready site, which is what we want to be, is you either have a building sitting there, or you have a pad, you know, like a big concrete pad. And I'm going to apply for funds to finish up the infrastructure and to also do that pad.
I know we had put an application in to build a spec building.
Yes, we, we didn't get that.
Okay. So the next step would be trying to get the money for a pad?
Right. Because they only approve one applicant per county.
Well, who got, was there another applicant per?
The city of Puffell got it last year when I applied for the building. They got it for a $4 million site pad.
Okay. So we've got a shot at getting it this year.
Yeah, I hope so. I'm, I'm saying it. I'm, I'm asking.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize the submission of a letter of intent for an application to Kentucky Association for Economic Development Site Selection Group for the Wolf Pit Industrial Technology Park, and approval for checking the amount of $1,000 made payable to the K A E D Foundation for the application fee?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshur. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
There was a match this year, which was good news. It was a 50-50 match, like the city of Puffell's $2 million, they got, they have to put up $2 million. The match has changed now, and Pike County's match is 12%, which is great news.
Good deal. All right.
Okay.
Next item is adoption of resolution for the filing of a House Bill 6 project proposal grant application for 1.5 million in local government economic development, single county funds for the fiscal court bridge and road repair replacement resurfacing project, authorizing and directing the judge to execute any documents which are deemed necessary, and authorizing the judge executive to act as the authorized correspondent. This is the money we're using to do some of the road and bridge repairs and resurfacing. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is awarding of bids. Greg.
I do have a few things, Judge. It was recommended that we did a, do a bid package on our pickleball court resurfacing. We had bid opening on October 15th on bid number 36-2024 for pickleball court resurfacing, painting, and net installation. We had one bidder, it was Reed's Healthy Home Solutions of Belfry for a cost of $29,000. The bid meets all the specs that were in the bid package. This bid is for the installation of both John R. Phillips Park at Hardy and Johnson Bottom Park at Freeburn. It would be a cost of $29,000 at each park. It would be my recommendation that we award the bid to Reed's Healthy Home Solutions for the bid price of $29,000. We kind of tentatively approved the whole project at a previous court meeting. Of course, Freeburn, that's, that would be the total cost, and Hardy, we have the installation of the hardtop, and then resurfacing, and also the fencing. And I think the total cost for both projects complete was a little over $88,000. I think we approved that, but we just need to do a bid package on the resurfacing because of the cost.
So is there a motion to award bid 36-2024 to Reed's Healthy Home Solutions for the amount of $29,000? Authorization to issue payment for the same.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshur. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
A couple of court meetings ago, we approved a bid on two Salt Dog, salt spreaders to go in the Peterbilt trucks that we bought last winter. We never had bought snow removal equipment for them. We did a bid package for the two Salt Dog spreaders. We also need to buy two plows for those trucks. I was a little bit delayed in getting the final quotes on these, so I'm just bringing it to you now. It's a Western 9.5 commercial plow for installation of 30 lights on each of them for the two plows, for the two Peterbilt trucks. It'd be a total cost of $24,196.42. That would have the two Peterbilts that we have ready for snow removal.
All right. So the cost for the plows with the headlights?
They will install 30 headlights, 30 lights on the plows.
Yeah. It's 24,196.42, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve purchasing from the M S E companies in Buchanan, Virginia, the two plows with the lights and installation, et cetera, labor for the Peterbilt trucks for the sum of $24,196.42?
This is Sourcewell pricing.
And this is Sourcewell contract price.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Abshur.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
The other six-wheeler dump truck that we acquired in the middle of last winter was a Kenworth, the one that had the little bit shorter bed on it that we bought. We haven't bought snow removal equipment for it. I've got pricing on a, on a Western plow for it, and actually on a Henderson Salter. They're both on Sourcewell pricing, but I did a little research and discovered that the Henderson Salter's on an N P P co-op contract that we have, and it was actually a little less expensive. There's a little bit of difference between this Western plow and the Western plow that we're putting on the Peterbilts, the only, it's a couple hundred dollars. The difference is in the installation cost. But to be able to buy a Western plow for the Kenworth and a Henderson spreader for the Kenworth, the total cost would be 36,000, and including installation, the cost would be $36,658.97. And that would, that should complete all of the snow removal equipment we need to purchase for this year.
All right.
Greg, that is a problem, right? That is a problem in solid.
Yes.
Okay. That's one of the points.
Fabian, come up for just a second, will you? So, you know, people want to talk about county buying equipment and stuff, where you can't clean the thousand miles of county roads with shovels. I mean, so we've got these trucks, we need to get them ready to go. It won't be too long till the, till that we, I mean.
It's right here on us.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we've had winters that have been bad since I've been judge, and we've had winters we haven't hardly even put any snow, salt down. But how is the condition of the snow removal equipment? Have you all been getting the?
Listen, it's the best that we've ever had. Honestly, I mean, you could ask any guy on the road department, and they'll tell you, anybody who's been here very long, they'll tell you this is the best that we've ever had as far as equipment to plow and, you know, plow and salt roads with. And we, you know, coming up, you know, we've got those pickups that the court had bought for the road department. We'll be, you know, we'll be outfitting those also, so.
I think we already got approval to go ahead and after, we're just waiting on them to come in.
Yeah.
For the, for the plows and, and Salters for the three F350s that we just bought.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're in great shape on our snow equipment, snow removal equipment.
All right.
It's all new. We've never had that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. And people criticize us for buying new stuff for.
Yeah, but they're not the ones out there driving 16 hours a day either. Maybe I shouldn't have said that, I'm sorry. But when you're out there, when you're out there driving, you know, the snow plow removal, I promise, that snow removal is not an easy game.
Well, it's a dangerous game, too.
It's dangerous, and you're tense all day. I mean, you can't, you can't ever let up. I mean, it's a hard day's work.
I've been out with you doing that.
You have.
It's not much fun.
No, it's not.
And particularly when it's real dark. And one of the things that I had a concern about was the lights on the trucks not having.
And since then, and since you brought that up, now we all, we've put the light bars on all of our trucks.
Yeah, so, you know, Fabian and I went over, we were over in.
Fets Creek.
Fets Creek, and I ran the plow out there because the roads had been missed. And it was, you know, the problem is, because you're not using the headlights on the truck because of the bleed, and you got those, they had two lights, and when they got dirty, you simply, you could not see the roads, and it was dangerous. And I told Fabian we needed light bars on all the trucks.
Right.
And.
We have them.
That was, that was a safety, to me, it was a safety issue for the employees.
It was.
And so have we got all of the Salters ready to go, oiled and lubed and everything?
Well, now, they're currently, I'm not going to sit here and say all of them are, but they are working on them, and they will be, they will be ready. We kind of wait, because, you know, we're still blacktopping, so we've not stuck them on the trucks yet that we're using, because, like I said, we're still asphalting, so we're going to try to push that, you know, as long as we can. But they are, but they are making sure that all those units are ready to go and can just be dropped in.
All right. So is there a motion to purchase the, on the Sourcewell contract, the Salter, plow, and the lights, and the items that are listed here from the M S E companies for the Kenworth truck for $36,658.98, $658.97, and authorization to issue payment for the same?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
The, the plow, that's on Sourcewell contract, the Salter is actually on an N P P contract, which is a little bit better price. One other thing I have, Judge, is I was in a meeting a few days ago with William and Chuck, and J.J. and Darren, and we were discussing a boom truck that we have that we use daily that's, the engine is in bad shape, I guess, from what I understand. I don't know a whole lot about it, but it's a lot of blow-by, and it's not going to last very long. This is a truck that we use daily. And when we really need it the most is during the holiday season, I guess, when we put out the open tops at the closed lots, when we close for a few days. Of course, that stuff's piled up, they put twice as much stuff in the open tops as they'll hold, and stuff's everywhere. We, we use it to clean all them up around those dumpsters during Thanksgiving holiday and Christmas holiday. But this is the, this is the piece of equipment we use to pick up a lot of the bulk stuff that's set out, you know, wash machines, couches, stuff like that. So we use it on a daily basis. We've got three quotes, I'm replacing the engine. Two of them are quotes for swing engine, which means they're a complete engine, they're ready to just swing over and sit down on the truck. One is for Martin's Peterbilt, a cost of $34,528.60. One of us is for Worldwide Equipment for $30,257.26. And the other one is from Jasper Engines. This is, if we purchase the engine and put it in our cell, our cost would be $17,954. But when you buy this from Jasper, there's a lot of other things that have to be put on the engine to get it to where it's, I guess, you consider it a swing engine. Darren and J.J. said it's probably another $6,000 or $7,000. So, so really, this would be about a $25,000 cost. So really, when you figure these three quote, quotes, the real difference, the engines, by the time you get them ready to go, are going to be about the same. Really, the, the labor is the difference. What it comes down to, is it better for us to try to do it ourself and save $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 in labor, possibly? But right now, we're shorthanded at the maintenance garage. I think, I think we're down a mechanic, and it might take them quite a while to be able to install this engine, whereas we could send it to one of these other ones and, and let them do it, and it'd be done in a lot shorter time, possibly in, in two or three weeks, when we make sure we have it ready to go with the new engine before the holiday season hits. So if you look at it like that, the difference between the Martin's Peterbilt quote and the Worldwide quote is about $2,300. Another thing, if you let Worldwide or Martin's put it in and something isn't exactly right, you have somebody to take it back to, to make sure it's right. In this situation, it'd be my recommendation that we, that we send it to Worldwide Equipment for the complete swing engine labor and everything for a total cost of $30,257.26.
Hey Greg, let us come back to this one, just to make sure. Let's, let's talk about this one again after the break.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm going to talk to Chuck about it before we do anything else. You have anything else?
No, that's all, Judge.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. As far as our, our work goes, honestly, we're doing well. We're, we're finally getting some, making some headway on our asphalt. I do believe that we will have the bulk of what we had intended to do. I think we will be able to get that done before the plant closes. So we're doing well there. We will be starting the bridge at Watson Hill, probably middle of next week. It's really just me getting that design out to them. So I, you know, I've not finished with my design yet, but once I get that out to them, we'll start that bridge at Watson Hill. We did work on the bridge at Herrick, and I think I called you and told you. We, we worked on it, and that honestly is a temporary fix. We know that we'll come back and replace that entire bridge. It's just that this will buy us some time on it till we can get there. Really, that's, that's about all. I mean, all the crews are working, and they're working hard. The only other thing that I would like to ask you is, is if you could maybe help me out with some more money for the asphalt, Judge? I don't think he heard me, or he acted like he didn't hear me.
He's all we can get.
That's what I was wanting. That's what I was wanting there. Yeah.
All right.
Only thing was, as I was aggravating yesterday, I was going to ask you for some more money for the asphalt.
We'll do that, but I'm sitting here talking to William, trying to figure this other thing out here.
Okay. Do you want me to explain why I had to do this? Well, I mean, what happened there, Judge, is, as you know, but maybe the public don't, is we did put Millers Creek in for the emergency funding, but as you know, they changed, they changed the format and then the procedure it went to. So honestly, it was partly my fault, because I thought that the application I'd sent in would have just crossed over, with which it didn't. So now we don't have time to get that, so we'll have to really, that's reason, because we have promised everybody that we would do Millers Creek, and we need to do Millers Creek. It is really a bad road.
Yeah.
And so that's where the bulk of that money's going to go, is to pave Millers Creek.
That works. Yeah, it, it needs to be done. It's not being done.
It is bad. No, it's not. It's not been done in a while.
All right.
But that's all I have, Judge.
Can you get us an up-to-date number on how many miles we've paved?
Well, sure, I could probably.
In the last five, six years? If you could do that for me.
Yeah, absolutely. You want that today, or?
I just want every.
Okay, yeah.
Before the next court.
I'll have it in next court meeting, and I'll have everybody a little spreadsheet with what we've done.
That works.
Okay.
And is there a motion to approve the completed and scheduled work?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes. All right, treasurer's business.
Approval to execute a proposal with J.M. Wood Auction Company to sell the Mack trucks in the December 2024 auction in Montgomery, Alabama, and for the judge to sign all related documents.
Frankie, why don't you just read them all together, and we'll just do one motion.
Next is to authorize payment to the election workers, polling places, and election commissioners for the November 24 election, once invoices are received from the county clerk's office, to acknowledge receipt of the sheriff and clerk's 2550 report for September 2024, to authorize checks for lodging, registration, and expenses for any employee needs to attend the 2024 K A E D Kentucky Economic Forum, December 9th through the 11th, at the Hyatt Regency in Louisville, to acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's monthly financial statement ending September 30th, 2024, and last, to authorize payment of the expenditure approval list dated October 21st, plus any other utility bills before we run checks.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's business list as stated?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshur. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yeah.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
That's all I had, Judge.
All right, thank you, sir. Next time, we do have need for executive session. Would the county attorney please instruct the court and the public on the relevant provisions of the Kentucky Open Meeting Law?
To enter into executive session, according to K R S 61.810, paragraph C to discuss proposed or pending litigation, and paragraph F to discuss specific personnel.
All right. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur.
Yeah.
Judge Jones. Judge Jones?
Yes. We'll be in recess for executive session. We're trying to call the chair.
Motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. And, um, it would be my motion to acknowledge the resignation of Justin Hunter Kennedy, uh, as a C D L lock, driver on road lot five, effective, uh, at a 4H rate of pay, effective October 6, 24, to acknowledge the resignation of Tyler Stump, effective 10, 19, I'm sorry, 10, 9, 24, to acknowledge the resignation of Bryson Lane, effective 10, 11, 24, to acknowledge the hiring of Colin Samuel Keane as a seasonal laborer at 2H rate of pay on the special crew, 10, 18, 24, uh, to acknowledge the hiring of Keegan Tyler Dawson as a greaser for solid waste at a 2H rate of pay, effective 10, 18, 24, to acknowledge a, uh, one-week suspension, uh, for, uh, Doyle May, uh, starting last Thursday, whatever that will be, the 17th. And, um, also moving him from a backhoe operator to 5H rate of pay on road lot one to a truck driver on the special crew at a 4H rate of pay, uh, effective, um...
October 22nd, 2024. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Next item is to go back to this bid. It would be my motion to purchase this engine for the F, Ford F-750 boom truck, uh, with the installation from Worldwide Equipment for the price of $30,257.26. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We need to get that truck back up because we got Thanksgiving and Christmas coming, so it's gotta be, uh, back quickly. Uh, the other question, other, other thing is, Chuck, do we need another boom truck?
Judge, I, I think we do, for sure. Uh, there are things that gets behind sometimes, like we have the contract out, getting the, the finances off and lost that.
Well, I know we don't have it budgeted, but, I mean, if we could use it to generate some revenue on some of these cleanups, or we could use it for commercial purposes. Greg, could you just put some fillers out and see what we could find on a boom truck?
Uh, we will. We're, we're trying to see if it'd be possible with a, a grant that we have coming up in the first few years, we'll look that in at this court.
Yeah. If we could get that other, because we got that, we've rewarded two grants. If we could use that for a boom truck, that would be.
We're trying to see if we can do that.
Okay. All right. All right. Anything from any of the department supervisors? I'm gonna cut this short and sweet. Anybody got anything to add, subtract, anything, anything else? All right. Paul, you got anything from the county attorney's office? Uh, anything from Commissioner Atkins?
No, Judge. Just thank everybody for all they do. Stay safe. Get ready for the holidays. Not too far off. That's it, Judge.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Abshur?
I'm like, uh, but I think all the workers are doing a great job. Everybody's doing a good job, I think, and I appreciate, and I, I just hope that the people of Pike County watch and understand that they're, the judge is really trying to do a good job for the people of Pike County. I just hope they understand that and appreciate it. That's all, Judge.
Thanks. Commissioner Scott?
Well, I, I'd like to just thank everybody for the county's work, because, you can sure tell they're bringing the county forward, and especially, like, I mentioned one thing. What a good job they do with that small paper and how much work they do with it. It's amazing, ain't it, Judge? That's all.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything to add. Is any of the business come before the court? If not, then I'm gonna ask Commissioner Abshur to, um, to say a benediction. We had, um, also wanted to mention that Jim Reed passed away, and he is the husband of Phyllis, who is the cook at Blackberry Senior Citizens. And Diane, um, wanted me to mention that family, too. So, um, Jim?
Who was it, Judge?
Who was it?
Uh, the Reed family of...
Reed family.
Yeah. And, um, so anyway, you have the...
I'd forgot about them, Judge, about the Reed family. But I know, but I'd forgot. I sure did.
Junior and Doug and those guys. Is that Junior and Doug and those guys' residue?
Yeah, there was a whole bunch of them, boy.
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Abshur?
Heavenly Father, as we approach our throne of grace again this day, thanking you for all the blessings of life that you bestow upon us. Lord, there's so many, and we can't mention them all, Lord, but we want to remember the Reed family, the Justice family. Uh, although, Lord, it's been mentioned here this day, I pray you will bless them upon each and every one of them. Lord, I, I pray for this court, and I pray for all the people that's here today. I just pray, oh, Heavenly Father, that everything that we do or say, we do it in the right manner. Show love one toward another and just be, live in peace and harmony. Lord, forgive us when we fail you and go with us through this day. Lord, we love you and we praise you, and it's in Jesus' name I pray, and amen.
Amen.
Is there a mo, yes, sir? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Skollet?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshur?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?